Hello, I know. Yeah, Chuck, Chuck, we hope for an emergency. And Joe's online, so, yeah. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the city council meeting to order. Will you all please stand with me to say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone. And I'm going to go through roll call. I'm going to begin with our council member online, Joe Burns.
Present.
And then moving on down, Brendan McGoffin.
Present.
Sarah Diamond, not here. Joanna Kestie.
Present.
Glenn Allen. And Nick Lavaca.
Present.
And Chuck is asked to be excused tonight. He's, uh, there's been a situation that arose, so Chuck will not be able to be with us tonight. So, um, all right, first, before I begin, I actually want to think, we have a couple of special guests here, and we're going to be having them come forward right after we do the agenda, consent agenda, and that is Senator Wagner. Welcome, Keith. It's so good to have you here. Thank you for coming tonight and giving us a legislative update. And we also have Jackson Blunt, who did a special project. And if you came into the side doors here, in between the sliders, you did see a box that said that it was just for the resignation of flags. Am I saying that right, Jackson?
Retirement.
Retirement of flags, all right. And he will be talking more about that. So first, let's move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Respectfully, this is a consent agenda.
No, the approval.
Or the agenda agenda. Oh, okay.
Actually, the agenda overall, are you wanting to pull something that you want to talk about?
Well, I'll, I would like to pull number one for further discussion on cost to the city.
All right, we will do that. So, moving on to...
Respectfully.
Respectfully, I, we got it, thank you. So, with approval of the agenda, and we're looking at actually on consent agenda, number one being pulled to be discussed regarding the funding regarding that. So, do I have an approval?
You can make...
With those change, with that change?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with that change.
Second.
All right. So I have a motion by Councilman Lavaca and seconded by Councilman McGoffin. Is there any more discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. Now, moving on to the consent agenda, items one through six, with number one being pulled to be discussed, and we will put that under new business at the very top before we do the budget amendment, all right? Okay, so consent agenda, with item number one being pulled to be discussed.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
All right. Do I have a second?
All second.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman McGoffin, seconded by Councilwoman Kestie. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. One thought, real quick, like I think with Sarah, didn't the council approve her absence? She is traveling at this point, is she not? Yep, all right, good, there we are. Thank you. Okay, we are going to move on to our introduction of our special guests, and we're going to begin with Jackson Blunt, who is an Eagle Scout and has put together a wonderful project for the city, and he's here to talk about it. So, Jackson, if you'd like to go to the mic and push the button to make sure the blue light is on?
Blue?
Blue, uh-huh, the light should come on.
It's green.
Or green, okay. Ours are blue.
It's blue. Do it this way, you were right.
Okay. Perfect.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening, everyone. Hello. Greetings. My name is Jackson Blunt. I am from troop 4070 in Cedar Woolley, and I did a flag retirement box for my Eagle project. So a little bit about me, I've been part of troop 4070 for about five years now, joined in 2017. And I thought of my Eagle project because the American Legion approached me, and it was like, they gave me some ideas. One was like cleaning up something, one was a, like a bench, like a concrete bench, and that felt like a lot of work. So I, and so I went with the flag retirement box, which was another option. So I picked that. I started the project back in September of last year, and I didn't get to actually assembling the box until like, um, January or February. It was late January or February because of school and scouts and just the business of life, so I didn't get the chance to get right on it. But, um, I did get the, all the materials donated from E and E lumber. Everything was donated, so that was super cool of them. And so it took me about a solid week, no, it took me about three hours to put the physical box together, and I had some fellow scouts come and help me with that. It was me, my brother, who was also going to get Eagle, and two other scouts. And we put it together in about three hours. But after that, I had to paint it and prime it, and that took me a long time, like a month was a while. I just didn't get around to it a lot, just got to, got busy. So when I finally put it together, it was pretty cool. And then I put the final cool touches on it, I put the stars on, and I put the plaque on it. And about a couple of days ago, I came here and gave it to Nathan Zaliza, him, he's my beneficiary, and he signed off on me, and I'm just waiting for my Scott Masters signature. So, yeah, that's about it.
Tell us about the box. So it's for...
Okay, so, yeah, it's a flag retirement box. So basically, when it's considered disrespectful to fly a flag that has holes or tears in it, or it's just old and it's, looks physically bad, so at that point, you don't want to fly it or put it up. So people don't really know what to do with it. Like, a lot of people don't know what to do with it, they just kind of put it in their closet and just kind of leave it there. So the box is an opportunity to properly retire that, so anyone in the community, or really anywhere, can come and drop the flag in the box. And me and/or my troop will come and pick them up every two months or three, it's a really big box, so I don't think we're going to have to do it too often. But we'll go, we'll come and pick them up, and we'll do a proper retirement ceremony for the flags.
That's very nice.
Where is it going to be located?
The box? So right now, it's in the, like lobby...
Between the two sliders as you come in, you passed it as you came in.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but it's gonna maybe be moved outside to the right as you enter in, by the bike rack. Nathan said he may move that bike rack and just put it there, but inside seems pretty good, but considering this place closes at five, four thirty normally or whenever, people don't have the opportunity to go in at like six, so maybe outside, I don't know. He may talk to me about that, but...
Does the Legion still have their box behind their...
Yeah, they do. But they said, they said for me to build another one, so I did.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
I'm curious, is the general public allowed to participate or watch the ceremony when you are disposing of the flags?
Um, I mean, they can. We are now, we were at the Catholic church, but because of COVID, they kind of pushed us away. So we are now meeting at the American Legion, so if you see us like burning a flag with a big bonfire, scouts all lined up, you could probably watch. But like, we don't normally post our schedule online for everyone to see.
Okay.
But if you see lots of Boy Scouts lining up, you could probably watch.
Okay, very good. Well, on behalf of the city, we thank you for the project. It's a, I think it's a admirable project, and you put a lot of time and effort into it, and I, we could tell, when you were talking about, you had to make time to make it happen, your busy schedule. So, Jackson, thank you very much for coming in and sharing this information and sharing your project and vision with the, with the city.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Is that something that we can advertise or post on our social media that, that is available for the community to bring that flag and maybe give some recognition as well?
Absolutely, or has it been already? Nope? Okay, yeah, absolutely, we can do that. Yeah, all right. And thank you, Nathan, for working with him on that. Greatly appreciate it. Yep. So our next presenter, we are very honored to have Senator Keith Wagner come and give us a legislative update, tell us what some of the things that probably are pertinent not only to our city but also to our state. So Keith, thank you very much for coming in this evening and taking the time out of your schedule to do this.
Well, it's my pleasure, and it's really fun to be back here in the chamber in person. It feels great. And although this is supposed to be a legislative update, it's been a long time since we've been out of session, and I think much of it is probably stale news, but I'll try to freshen it up a little bit. So the session this year was what's called a short session, sixty day session, and we got out on time. It was a grueling session. Three hundred and nine bills were passed out of thousands that were heard this year. And I wanted to talk about some of those that have impacted our cities. So there are new regulations, I don't see our solid waste folks here tonight, but that require organic material management. I think that's going to be something that's going to be a bit of a challenge for the city. It was not legislation that I supported, but it passed anyway, so now it's on to the city to figure out how to do that. I think we call that another unfunded mandate, but, but that is definitely going to affect our cities. There was also House Bill 1630 that changed your ability to decide whether or not you can have open carry in your building, so that's no longer up to local government, that has been decided by the state, and it is a done deal. So, um, there were a couple of others that had to do with biochar, and the, and I would encourage you, if you don't know what biochar is, to Google that, kind of a neat concept for carbon sequestering, and it will be something that cities will be affected by. So those were a couple of the things that are particularly perhaps pertinent to local government, among many others. I was able to pass four bills this year, and that was something I was very proud of because not many senators got that many bills. There was only one other Republican senator. I have to say, I have always tried to keep my briefs to the city and really my, my interactions with local government in general, very nonpartisan. It's gotten a little bit harder over the past couple of years, so I may dip into that, and I apologize in advance because I don't know what everybody's party is. But when you're in charge, you own your decisions, and there was a lot of bad decisions there last year. We are essentially under one-party rule at this point in the state. The majority controls the House, the Senate, the Lieutenant Governor's Office, the Treasurer's Office, the Secretary of State's Office, the Attorney General, the Insurance Commissioner, the Governor. So anything that the majority wanted to get do, done in the last session, they had the power to do it. Our platform, from the Republican side of the aisle, our goals this year were to improve public safety, and I'm looking at Chief Tucker and Jerry Gardner and our folks that work in that end of the building. And I feel bad that we did not do a good job in total as a legislature to correct some of the pendulum swing that went on last year in terms of what so-called police reform bills. You may be familiar with the fight that went on with Senate Bill 5919, which was a bill that I was happy to be the senator who amended it to allow police to pursue under reasonable suspicion instead of probable cause. Non-attorney, but reasonable suspicion was a lower threshold that would allow officers to detain and talk to people fleeing a crime before they got away, and either we lost a witness or we lost a suspect and they went on to do more harm. I worked hard in a bipartisan manner in the Senate to get that amendment put on. We felt great, it went over to the House. There's a, there are some procedural tricks that you can sabotage a bill, and that's what happened. Once they amend it, it has to come back to the other body for concurrence, and it was never brought to the floor again. So 5919 did not pass with a probable, or with reasonable suspicion, and I'm sorry, Chief Tucker, I worked as hard as I could on that bill to make it happen. We were able to correct an oversight in the equipment bill last year that limited our police to under fifty caliber and took away a non-lethal method of controlling people, beanbags, namely. And I was glad that the legislature worked together to pull back and allow the use of beanbags because it's going to save lives, and because we took away so many other tools that that's really important, we preserve the ones we can. So that, that was a missed opportunity in terms of public safety. I can tell you, in the next session, we're going to go back and try and fine tune some of that. I think that police reform in general was not all bad, but we went really too far in the last session, and we didn't do enough this session to correct that. So let's talk about money. We had a unique opportunity this year. Sixteen billion dollars in surplus unexpected funds, federal funds and regular state coffers came in. We had an opportunity to do some great things with that money, and it did not go our way. So I want, so this is where I'm going to get into the partisan part of this. Typically, budgets are worked in a bipartisan manner. This year, the operating budget and the transportation budget were done in a complete vacuum with no Republican input, and I don't think we got good results because of that. It, it was a shame. The entire sixteen billion was spent, there was no tax relief for the average citizens. There was a bill by Senator Seffsick up north of us to take off the state portion of our fuel tax for a year, just to give some relief to struggling families. And we all know that inflation is at a forty-year high and gas prices are at record highs. We couldn't get the other side of the aisle to concede that. We had better luck with the capital budget, and I have to say, that was worked really well with the other side of the aisle in a bipartisan manner, and as a result, we got better results for, for everybody. Cedar Woolley probably thinks they didn't get anything. I'm going to tilt that a little bit. Member requests were only about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars this year, a very small amount, particularly considering we had a sixteen billion dollar surplus, but that's not where that money went. So I put our money to our neighbors upstream, and that's important because they needed new wastewater lift stations and concrete. And my logic was, if things go wrong in concrete and they put sewage water in our river, we end up drinking it. So that's how I serve Cedar Woolley, by giving money to concrete. Another area that we gave money was Darrington's Wood Innovation Center. I was able to legislate to get one point seven million to the wood innovation center. That's going to be a industry driver for our neighbors, and I think we will probably get the benefit of some of that. Some things that have bothered constituents, the long-term care insurance program. It's an income tax. It was very unpopular with business, it was very unpopular with individuals. We should have turned it back because it was a poorly planned and poorly executed program. Not that long-term care isn't important, but it's essentially, it was a Ponzi scheme that was never going to work. The majority allowed us to put that on hold until July 1st of 2023, so it's a little bit of a shuffling trick. It didn't go away, it's just waiting to catch us next year. It would be my choice that we could just kill that program and start from scratch and figure out a better way, because when, when we passed that bill, we drove private insurance out of the state, and you cannot get it anymore. Emergency powers reform, I know that's on a lot of people's mind. We are now, I think, in the eight hundred and third or eight hundred and fourth day of Governor Inslee's emergency powers. And look outside, we're, most people are back to normal. I see no reason for the governor to retain emergency powers. However, we were unable to get the majority party to make any concessions on the other side of the aisle. There is a good chance, you hear in, in the news, there's a good chance that we're going to gain seats, the Republicans, in both the House and the Senate this session. I hope that one of the very first things we do is go back and refine the Governor's Emergency Powers Act. Now, I want to tell you, it's important for a governor to have emergency powers, and some of Governor Inslee's initial moves, I agreed with and supported. But eight hundred days later is ridiculous, and I can assure you, if I was sitting in the governor's mansion there, the other side of the aisle would be very upset with those powers. So I am hoping that when we go back in January, if, if indeed I do go back in January, well, I may not, let's just say, because I'm running for another office. But if we go back, it is my hope that we will have enough votes and that the majority party, whoever that is at the time, will bring that issue to the front and just fine tune it to a thirty-day window where the governor is required to consult with the legislature. For the last two years, I haven't had one conversation with the governor, and I don't think that's a very good way to serve all of you and all of the people in my district. So speaking of districts, we have redistricted. I lost some good people down south, the district shifted a little bit, but I'm happy to say that Cedar Woolley is right in the middle, and I'm not going to be leaving you anytime soon. So I think I would like to open it up for questions, Mayor Johnson, if there are any.
Absolutely. Are there any questions for Senator Wagner?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I got a question. So COVID has been just detrimental to, to a lot of things, but the mandates from the emergency powers, I think, have hurt our community the worst and put some people out of work. Is there any way that you guys are working towards looking at what we can do not to, to protect those who choose not to get a vaccine?
Well, where I stand on the issue is that it should be up to a person's own choice whether they get a vaccine or not. I can tell you that I am aware that many, many people have lost their jobs because of the governor's mandate. They call me all the time. Unfortunately, the courts have upheld his decision, and we live in a society that's run by laws, so there's not a lot that we can do until we pull those emergency powers back. If it was up to me, it would have never happened. There's some other examples where businesses were hurt. I think you're familiar with Billy's Cafe, who is suffering under about four hundred thousand dollars in fines for not operating within the governor's guidance. I am trying to work with LNI, I have a meeting, I don't know what the date is, to try and get them to give him some relief. I mean, for all practical purposes, the crisis is over, and I think it's kind of senseless to continue punishing people who are out of jobs, lost businesses, and we've seen it here, too. I think it's time to kind of move past it and, and let's show some forgiveness for our own people. That would be my preference.
Thank you very much for the answer.
That's one of them.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I just had a couple of quick questions. The first one is, with the record inflation, is there anything the state's looking to do to assist Washingtonians with that?
We did everything we could to make it worse, in my opinion. So the sixteen billion dollars should have gone to tax relief. The money that was used to fund the majority party's transportation plan is going to be, show up as an increase in registrations of vehicles, driver's licenses, transfers, vehicle background checks. Some of those license fees went up seventy-five percent to fund that, and there was never really a reason to do it. The Republican plan was to take one-half of the retail auto sales tax and put that into the transportation budget. And because we had the sixteen billion dollar surplus, this would have been the year to wean ourselves off of the gas tax, because every other transportation budget means gas prices go up, right? What's really logical about the sales tax solution is, first of all, it raises more money than they're raising by raising all of these other fees that, that hurt our poorest citizens the most, but it's also population proof. More people come, more cars get sold, more money gets brought in. It's also inflation proof. Car prices go up, sales tax goes up, more money comes in. So it, it's a very elegant solution. Unfortunately, the other side of the aisle didn't want to hear it, and that's why you are all going to be paying more for fuel, for licenses, and for everything else, because we all know that energy is the bottom point of the food chain that runs inflation uphill. So I am sorry to inform you that we did not do anything. Next session, we'll be back there fighting to do something.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Kestie.
I just wanted to say thank you for all your hard work and keep up the good fight.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
All right. I'm...
May I ask one more question?
Yes, go ahead.
On the safety issues that we've had within our own community, we're seeing a lot more people just blatantly walk out of stores with armloads or shopping cart loads full of stuff. The police have their hands tied on what they can and can't do. Is there anything that we can do to bring back some support for our police officers in keeping our community safe for all the residents?
Yeah, well, I, I think Cedar Woolley's done a great job supporting our officers. They can't be everywhere, and that... They can't be everywhere, and that, I mean, if they see somebody walking out of the store and they're there in time, yes, they can do something, but they can't be everywhere. And we've set up a situation where there's a lack of respect for law enforcement and a lack of respect for social norms, and we're seeing it across the board. I think one of the worst things that we did was set up a situation where people who are either in crisis, in drugs, or in behavioral health crisis, now our officers, our first responders, our firemen, our police officers cannot detain them and take them to a place where they can get better. There was some improvement this year in legislation on that. I think it is more clear, and Chief Tucker may correct me if I'm wrong, that we made progress in that area, so I'm happy that we did that. But in terms of general lawlessness, we gotta do better for our police officers. We need to change the laws back closer to what they were when we started. It was as if the bad guys were waiting for a starting gun. July 1st, when all of those reforms went into effect, crime shot up almost immediately, and it has stayed up. And I think things like vehicle thefts are up 100%, 200%, but also really bad things like human trafficking is up triple digits. That's cause and effect. It was predictable, and we should be doing better down there. I will note that some of the prime sponsors of that legislation aren't running again this year. So essentially, came in, introduced legislation, made a mess, and went home.
Yeah, thank you very much. I do think that the Cedar Woolley officers are doing an amazing job in keeping our community safe, but it's been a challenge for them, and I think that some of that was coming from Olympia, so support there on the legislation that's going through is helpful.
And sometimes the best solutions are local solutions. The way your police department interacts with the community through social media, that's huge. You know, I put a post on Facebook and I'll get three likes or something. When our police department puts a post on Facebook, there's 300 or 1,000 likes, so they've got, they've solved that piece of interaction with the community. It's really important.
I agree. I agree wholeheartedly. Thank you for that. But you get more than three likes, I can tell you that.
Yeah, if I put a puppy on there, but if it's just me, not so much.
I'm wondering, a couple of things. I have a couple of questions, just curious, because this, it has really been historic, the way for the last two years that we've been running the legislation, doing things via Zoom, and even the way that legislatures have been reaching out to one another and to their constituents. Can you speak to that a little bit? I'm guessing there were both pros and cons involved in that?
Yes, you're exactly right. I believe that the Capitol should be open to the public, because as you have experienced and I experienced when I was in your seat, having a room full of people, either mad or happy, with their eyeballs on you, holds you accountable. You feel more accountable in person. The Zoom specialty committees, you know, you get your 30 seconds, I see your face, and I'm not the chair, but click, click, next, 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 next. It's not the same type of impact as when you're in a room full of people watching you. It is more convenient, so I will say that, you know, people who live over in Republic can testify without driving six hours, and I think that we will retain some of those. The Senate has been doing a remote committee for years, but only in special rooms. We learned that we can do it anywhere now, with Zoom, or Teams, or GoToMeeting, choose your software. But I think that is a benefit, because it allows more people to participate. It was kind of fun seeing, I'm just Miss Housewife at home, and I'm starting to get interested in what's in the bills, and now I've looked them up, and I heard lots of great testimony from housewives who were watching their kids in their pets. It was kind of fun. So it opened some doors in terms of being able to be inclusive and get more people in, but we need to do both. We need to have the Capitol dome opened up again with a press looking down on us, with people looking down on us, because it's very easy to make bad policy when you don't feel like anyone's watching you. You need those eyeballs to hold people like me and other people in the legislature responsible for their decisions.
Well, along those lines, so something that I really found disappointing were the meetings that were held by the Democrats, and they excluded the Republicans, knowing that they didn't need to include the Republicans because they didn't have a vote. And I just, you know, I feel like everybody has to have a say whether the vote's gonna, if apparent, is gonna go one way or the other. What is your thought on that? And also, do you think that there's a way that that can be corrected, so that everybody's in the room who's supposed to be in the room?
Well, big imbalances in power result in behavior like that, and that goes either way. The best legislation, I think, comes when there's just about parity. You know, it doesn't have to be exactly equal. But when there's a measure of equality in each body, it requires everybody to think carefully, to compromise, and maybe what's best for a district, a rural and small city district like mine, isn't what's best for somebody who represents Seattle, but when we're close in numbers, we have to get together and talk it out, because one or two votes the other way, maybe it doesn't get through. So I think better legislation is done with balanced legislatures. And I think some of that will be restored, that's my opinion, in this coming election. I certainly hope so. But we have a democratic process for picking representatives. It's up to the people to decide whether they like the way things are going or not. And I often hear say, well, we need to vote people out, but that isn't how it works. You have to find the right person to vote in, and that's up to all of you.
Right, exactly. And going back to your statement about Cedar Woolley didn't feel like that it got much of anything, you know, truth be told, we understood, we talked to the other legislatures, and we understood what was happening down there. We really did. But the one thing that I will say that we're very grateful about is that you've always been accessible, you know, as been, as Representative Eslic and whatnot, and I think that that's more powerful in and of itself. And so we're grateful to you and the other legislatures who are willing to hear us out, even if they can't do anything, take our emails, even when, you know, again, it's maybe something that they're not able to do, but we're very grateful to you and to all the legislatures who are taking time and energy to build a better Washington.
So I would like to give some credit to legislators on the other side of the aisle, because I've been in the minority the last five sessions, but we have been pretty successful in bringing good things to the 39th, typically not in policy changes, but in dollars that have come in, like our Behavioral Health Center that is east of town that the county is building and managing. I'm waiting to see when that opens, like the library and other projects. Some of the folks that have helped me get that are on the other side of the aisle. And Senator David Frocht helped us get behavioral health money up here because he was the budget writer. I am sad to see him retire because I'm worried about who might fill his shoes, but I'd want to always remember that I got as much through Democrat David Frocht as I got sometimes from my own side of the aisle. So that's why it's really important to have good relationships down there, and that's why I think balance is so important. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight.
Anybody else need a mic?
Thank you, Senator. Okay, moving on, we will go to staff reports, and I will begin with you, Chief Tucker.
Just a couple of things. One of the things that got brought up at management team meetings is the, probably the need for providing some written information instead of a verbal, very brief verbal, I guess, breakdown of what's going on. So you've seen the breakdown under, let's see, information-only items for fire department reporting data. We're gonna start doing that as well. So probably not a lot from me or Dan in coming meetings, just being here is kind of a bouncer, but more, a little more data that you can take a look at and have at your fingertips, too. So look for that starting the next council meeting. And one other thing, just, I guess, a reminder for folks that didn't know, Public Works Day is gonna be on Friday. Is it 10 to 2, Nathan? 10 to 2, we're gonna have it set up in the park. Nathan and the Public Works guys put together a lot of tractors and trucks and stuff like that, and then we bring a patrol car, and the fire department brings fire trucks, and it's a pretty good day for the kids to come show up, and I think they even bring them down, march them down from Evergreen Elementary in Central, and they get to come see it. So it's quite a day, and a good time, said, we got one officer, one of our, you'll be able to tell he's old enough to be out there presenting a police car, because he's taller than the rest of the young people on there, so you'll be able to tell them apart from them. And then the final thing I had is on the week, not this coming week, the week after, Rotary is partnering with Citi to rebuild the covering over the grilling area down at Riverfront Park, and it's the grilling area between the main pavilion down there and the, when Carl Garrison had the flag erected down there. And there's the grill area where they do salmon barbecue and all that. We're gonna be constructing that, and I'm gonna be down helping, actually carrying stuff for Kevin and Brent, I'm thinking, part of that weekend. They've already started the process, we're waiting for concrete to cure. So if you get a chance to go down there, see some projects, that's a partnership between the Citi and Rotary. And we're happy to continue that tradition of keeping that park looking really nice the way it does now. We're making it even better. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Assistant Chief Gardner.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm here for Chief Wagner. Not exactly sure where in the Bahamas he is, but he's enjoying himself, I'm sure. Quick COVID update from the county website. We are 143.1 per 100,000, that is a 6% increase from last week, but our hospitalization rate over that last seven days is at 3.8 per 100,000, and that's a 45% decrease. So we are seeing some good numbers there. From the fire department end, our staffing is still, continues to be a challenge for us. We currently have seven of our 13 rooms and our two stations with resident firefighters in them. Four of them are in training right now, whether EMT or firefighter one. We're hoping by the end of June to have them completely up to speed with their certifications and on shifts and working with us. And I'm meeting with an eighth right now with some onboarding, so hopefully by the end of the month, we'll have them moving in and ready to go. We're still looking at multiple ways to do recruiting, from online job fairs, in-person job fairs, to, we did put our positions on publicsafety.net last month, and so we're starting to see some people applying there and starting to screen through those applications as well. I get to go down in about a week and a half to the Snow Isle Skill Center down in Snohomish County to meet with a group of seniors that are in their fire-fight program, meet with them and talk to them about the opportunities that we have for them to live in Woolley and grow their careers with us. So, and our volunteers have their next quarterly test on July 16th. So they just finished one in April, and so their next one will be July 16th as well. So we're very excited to have kids showing up in our building. We had 22 from Central Elementary today come through and do police and fire tours, so they had a good time today. That was a lot of fun. We have four more scheduled through the end of the month, so whether it's in concurrence with the City Hall, with the mayor, the police department, and the fire department, we actually had one call and request Station 2. They really wanted to see Station 2, so we've got a tour scheduled up there as well, so we're pretty excited about that. And, you know, call volume allowing and manpower, we're gonna do our best to be a big part of Nathan's event on Friday, so we hope to get a fire truck and some crews down there as well, so we're pretty excited about that.
Thank you. And for those of you who went going through the packet, under information, there's four sheets that actually have graphs and lots of information there regarding the calls that are going on with the fire. It was really well done. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, Public Works Director, Mark Freiberger, hello.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Just a couple of things tonight. The wastewater lab ops and public work building project is about 50% complete now. They actually have painted the interior of the wastewater building, and so that's actually getting fairly close. Probably still gonna take till September because of casework acquisition, but it's well ahead, physically ahead of the process, and moving well along on the other side of the structures as well. The other thing I wanted to mention to you tonight, met with the school board on Monday night and presented on the Jones John Liner Trail Project, the quarter project. As we've mentioned to you before, one critical element of that is a memorandum of understanding with the school district to allow for boundary line adjustments at their white lane transportation facility to allow for the roadway, the north trail road extension through that area. And I did the presentation, not expecting they would act that night, but they did. They've approved the memorandum of understanding, so you'll be seeing that in the not-too-distant future for your review and action. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Finance Director, Debbie Burton.
Thank you. Currently, we're busy working on our annual report that is due May 30th to the State Auditor's Office. And once again, we have some transition happening within the finance department. We have a new employee, her name is Erica Griffiths, so if you hear another voice on the phone, please welcome Erica to our city. We had an intern that we were fortunate to get reimbursed for, who's been with us for quite some time, and tomorrow is his last day, and so we just want to publicly thank Piyant Shu Sharma for being part of our team for the last few months, so it's been a pleasure to work with him. And I highly encourage intern programs, and I thank the mayor and Charlie for being supportive of internship programs. I'm very much looking forward to transitioning with Kelly coming at the end of the month, so things are looking pretty good in finance, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Debbie. And our business administrator, Charlie Bush.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson and Council. Just a few items tonight. First one is Lisa Bloom is with us in the back of the room there on the left, and Lisa, as I mentioned in previous meetings, is the chief of civil law for Fort Sill, Oklahoma. We've had a great week so far, and we're looking forward to a little bit more time exchanging ideas between her role in helping the installation at Fort Sill and how they work with internally, but also with localities, and she's here seeing how we work with counties and cities and nonprofits, and just exchanging ideas on how we can all do that better, and hopefully helping her out in the future at Fort Sill and also helping us out here. There'll be an after-action report that she's writing up that I'm also taking a look at, and I'll share that with you once we've got that fully drafted. So welcome, Lisa. And also, I wanted to mention, there's an MRSC webinar coming up on the 19th of May called Building a Great Workplace Culture in a Time of Change, and I have the opportunity to present as a part of that, representing Cedar Woolley, so I'm looking forward to bringing that attention to the community. Staff reports, as Chief Tucker mentioned, are gonna be consolidated in these meetings, as what we discussed at senior management team, and we're looking to put more information in writing and put that into the packet, just to kind of help the flow of these meetings, and we're still all available, of course, for questions, but just looking to make better use of everybody's time. There's also something we're gonna start called the Weekly Update, which is an email that I'll be sending out on Fridays. It's not gonna be every single Friday, if I'm on vacation, for example, and I'm not gonna shoot it off from vacation, but that'll provide you more information as well on just generally what's going on in the city. Council Governance Manual, we've had a little bit of conversation about that and the possibility of looking at some revisions on that, so that's something we would plan to talk with you more about at a future meeting, and just kind of get a plan going on that. But there are some things that we've started to do as a group, as a council, that aren't necessarily 100% consistent with that, so we want to make sure we true up what's actually happening here with what's actually in the manual going forward, and perhaps clarify some things in there. And lastly, I will miss the next meeting because I'm taking a vacation to go see my mom in Florida.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna go to John Coleman, building and planning.
I just have a question for Charlie. With the weekly email, is it something that with all these new hires, that maybe I'm not getting it, but that we could see who's coming on in those friendly faces?
Absolutely. Yeah, we get pictures of all the new employees, and we're trying to make sure they're better quality, they're not always, sometimes they look like the driver's license picture, but yeah, we will absolutely share more about picture. But yeah, we will absolutely share more about them.
Yeah, and just their name and who they are and the department.
Happy to do it.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, John.
Good evening. So I was out sick last week, so I apologize. I was not able to get my usual reports to the city council on today's agenda. What I can mention is we've noticed a trend over the past month and a half where we've received almost, I don't think we've received any building permits. So things have slowed down, which has been useful because we've been able to train our new permit tech, and she's coming along greatly. We're already identifying ways to improve systems. And so the slowdown in processing permits has been good to enable improvements in our department. Next week is the planning commission meeting on Tuesday night. Because I missed last week, again, it's going to be a bit of a challenge to get to the planning commission their information. We're taking on two new items that are part of the comprehensive plan update that planning commission hasn't started yet. That's, one of them is the review of the parks impact fees. And the other is something that the Public Works Department needs to do to update language in the capital facilities plan about stormwater information. So that's a fairly minor one. But Public Works has put a lot of hard work into updating the language, but it's a little bit of no-brainer stuff, just things that, just minor updates. And that's what the planning commission's going to be working on next week. There will not be any public hearings because we were not around to put together the public notices and everything necessary for a public hearing at next week's planning commission meeting. So that's my report for today. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And staying online, moving to Council, Joe Burns.
I just wanted to thank Senator Wagner for coming in and giving us that briefing today. I really appreciate you taking the time to speak with us. Otherwise, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Councilwoman McGoffin.
Thank you. I just have one item this evening. I've been working with the Northwest Innovation Resource Center, and they're doing a data resilience workshop. It's for any small business or mid-sized business that wants to learn more about their business or their customers and a way to analyze their data to make themselves more efficient and better for their customers. There is a grant through the Skagit County. If you're under 500 people, you would qualify for your business. So I'm trying to get it out to businesses in Ward One and in the city. But if anybody knows of a business that would qualify or would be interested in this, you're welcome to reach out to me, and I can get you in contact with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kestie.
Okay. Well, I was just going to go over the retreat that we had. As much as I enjoy working with this council, it's my opinion that the retreat we had to participate in was a complete waste of taxpayer dollars. These feel-good, learn-how-to-communicate lectures accomplish nothing and are wasting salary-paid employees' time and energy. We waste thousands of dollars and accomplished absolutely nothing. Taxpayers want fire and police to show up when they call. They want their streets swept, and they want their toilets to flush. This class was a prime example of why people get angry with government spending, and I will not vote to approve any payables with this type of government waste, especially when we're on a tight budget.
Councilman Allen.
Well, on that happy note, I would like to thank Keith, because I'm older than him. I can call him Keith. And anyway, I saw, just to ramble just for a second, John Coleman, if you're there, WRP was Willis Rogers and Pearson. And the Pearson was our mayor when the sewer was, or the San, what do you call it down there?
Sewer system?
Yes, sewer system.
Wastewater, the wastewater treatment plant?
Yeah, wastewater treatment. So anyway, that's what WRP was.
Interesting. Okay, thank you. Councilman Lavaca.
Thank you. So we did have our Parks and Recreation Committee meeting today and discussed a lot of great things. We had, obviously Nate was there, and same thing with Mark, which was really great, and Joelle and Kestie. So there was a lot of things discussed in that and ways to look at how we can beautify our community and incorporate the parks as part of like more of a circuit within our community. Hopefully, a lot of good ideas, and some of them will be able to manifest into reality and bring before the council to discuss and maybe vote on in time. So thank you, guys, for all your support, and hope to bring back more information on the next committee meeting.
All right. Thank you. So looking ahead, in June, we're actually, during our study, we're going to be continuing on with all the things that we started in the strategic planning. So...
Will it be?
I'm just giving a report. That's okay. Thank you, Joelle.
All right.
And also this week, I want to thank Senator Wagner for the Water Task Force meeting that took place. This has been going on for four years. There have been some really excellent testings that have been going on, research that has been going on. And I think that we're actually discovering that we have a lot more resources here than we thought, that the basins actually run deeper than they do regarding the water. So really good headway. It's been a slow process, but thank you, Senator Wagner, for getting that all started, moving that forward. And I think not only will the ecosystem for the Skagit River continue on, but I think it'll also be beneficial, too, for those who live east of us. So with the possibility of doing wells. So that's what we're looking for. So, thank you. And from there, we were going to move on to public comment. It is 6:54. I'm going to open up public comment. If there is anyone either online or in the council chamber who would like to give public comment, please come to the podium, give your name and address, and try to keep it to three minutes. So is there anyone in the chamber here? Okay, seeing none. How about online? Is there anyone online who would like to give public comment? All right. Hearing none, 6:55. I'm going to close public comment.
Mayor, may I interrupt?
Yeah.
I do have a public comment that I want to read into the record.
Excellent. Excellent. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. This came from Ashley Henderson at 4:16 PM this evening. I'm writing because my family and I have been looking for a house to buy in Cedar Woolley for over one year now. My family and I have been renting in Cedar Woolley for the past five years, and my son attends Evergreen Elementary. The rents in the past five years have skyrocketed in the area, and the housing market has done the same. I was astounded to find out that Cedar Woolley has been worst in the state for vacancies for the fifth year in a row, as well as highest rents outside of Seattle. I heard there was a proposal for some multifamily housing that would give Cedar Woolley more affordable housing options, but it was voted down. My question is, why would you vote no for something that proposed to be part of the solution to our housing crisis? What steps are you taking to help us residents in your district who are renting but want to buy homes, but there are no options available? How come I don't see housing on any of the agendas for city council to discuss? Seeing how we are the worst in the state for the fifth year in a row tells me that we are ignoring the problem and have done a poor job planning. Please make housing the number-one priority, as it is the number-one problem our citizen residents face today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Debbie. Anyone else? Okay, it's 6:56, and I'm going to close public comment and move on to new business. And I believe, Debbie, you were up. It's a 2022 budget amendment.
I will start with the consent agenda item that was removed. We'll turn that to Charlie.
I'm happy to present the item, Mayor, if you would like me to do that initially.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Absolutely. So this was an item that we put on the consent agenda to declare Juneteenth a city holiday. And a little bit of background, there's a resolution attached to the agenda cover. Juneteenth has been recognized as a federal and state holiday. And in the city's bargaining agreement with the Washington State Council of County and City Employees, which is AFSMI. So it's in the contract that we approved late last year. It's not beneficially recognized, though, by the city as a city holiday. So the issue we're going to potentially have when we get to June 20th, the federally recognized holiday, is some of our staff will be here working, trying to maintain services for the public, and some of our staff have been granted a day off. So we saw this as a formality. It wasn't meant to be a slight or anything for the council, but that's why we put this on the consent agenda, because it's a federal holiday, a state holiday. We've already recognized it with one of our bargaining units. We haven't recognized it with police and fire at this time. Their holidays are handled a little bit differently. And I appreciate the call from Councilman Allen previously on this about the cost of it. We did send out cost information to the city council late last evening. And so that is in your inbox. I'm happy to cover more of that if needed. But that's a little bit of background.
Okay.
Okay. When I called you, I told you I wasn't trying to torpedo you. And, but what is the cost? Because I saw different numbers, and you start taking this into infinity, almost, you know, is it, you know, a half million dollars over the next 30, 40 years with COLAs and all that?
Well, I didn't do an analysis for the next 30 to 40 years, certainly. But the quick and dirty analysis, just for what is the value of eight, basically, what is the value of eight hours for all city employees? That number is 21,250. But that's not the actual cash out from the city for declaring it a holiday. In that case, the worst-case scenario, and this is if police and fire also had this as a holiday, police and fire are able to cash out holidays. Right now, with solid waste being an AFSMI, part of the AFSMI bargaining unit, the cost to the city is $1,300. And I put NA on this particular agenda cover memo because nonrepresented employees, that there is not a cost to declaring it a city holiday for them. They do not.
Okay. A concern for me is, I understand putting things on a consent, like finance, approval of minutes, but this is, if it's $21,000 a year for the next 50 years, that adds up quite a bit. And I think, I just don't like that kind of resolution with financial that we should be involved with not being put on to a consent agenda. That would be my concern. So, anyway, I appreciate you getting the information, but it is going to be costly to the taxpayers a little bit.
Certainly noted. I appreciate the comment.
Okay. Well, thank you, Charlie, for your work.
Councilman Lavaca.
I was just wanting to understand that a little bit more. So this is already negotiated into the contract for half of the city employees, but not the other half. And are those other half up for some sort of negotiations that you'll be doing anyways? Or is it just to get out of the way and blanket it, or?
Yeah. So we've got essentially four groups of city employees. We have the AFSMI employees, and it's in their contract that was approved by the council last year. So those employees have been granted this as a holiday. Some of them still have to work, like solid waste, but they're paid time and a half for that time. Other employees truly have the day off. So that's group number one. Group number two are nonrepresented employees who don't have a bargaining unit, so they don't have a labor contract. But they work typically very closely with AFSMI employees. So those two are a very close team. And then the last two are police and fire. Police and fire are under negotiations this year and may be, without discussing bargaining too much, but maybe requesting this as a holiday as well.
Thanks, Sherif.
Thank you. Councilman McGoffin.
I just had a question regarding the services. So you had mentioned that some departments would still be working at time and a half. Can you just quickly go through which services the city would still be providing on this holiday and which would not be?
Yeah, I think the challenge is it's really a mix. So we've got, for example, all of our directors are nonrepresented, but then we've got some other employees who are also nonrepresented. So you would have directors here, but I'm just thinking of finance as an example. You'd have the director, but none of the staff who actually run the finance department would be here. Over in planning and building, you would have the director and I believe our assistant planner, but the rest of the staff would not be present. Public works would be a mix in the office. Out in the field, I mentioned solid waste. Other employees, I defer to Mark probably on that to go all the way down the list, but that gives you hopefully some idea. So it's really a mix. It's not as if sort of one department's here and the other one isn't.
All right. Is there anyone else? Questions? So we're actually looking at Resolution 109322, and it was pulled off the consent agenda. So we would need a motion to pass. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion to pass, or to bring 109322 to a vote to pass Juneteenth as a city holiday.
All right. Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman McGoffin, to recommend the approval of Resolution 109322. Any more discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, same sign? Okay, so the motion carries. All right. So now we're looking at the 2022 budget amendment. Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you this evening is the budget amendment number one, which is typically routine for the city. After the close of a fiscal year, we then analyze the amounts that we have rolling over, which is, we consider, beginning fund balance from the prior year. Of course, we don't know that until after we close the first year. So this budget amendment, ordinance 201022, is made up of that significant amount. And as you know, we had a better year fiscally than we thought we were going to have when we originally budgeted back in 2020. So our beginning fund balances are significantly more to a tune of almost $4 million than we thought we were going to have going forward from 2020. So that's a good thing. Also reflected in this budget amendment is the investment that you have approved for the ARPA plan. So that's about $3.3 million. Those investments in, as you recall, in doing our parks and supporting police, fire, and various other projects that you have approved, as well as putting aside some monies for future impacts from the COVID-19 really virus. There is a staffing change that we are requesting in this. We are asking that you approve a new full-time equivalent employee. That employee will be in Public Works. It will be an operator two position. They will be primarily working in parks and stormwater. It is a position that we have needed for quite some time and are very happy that our budget has allowed us to add this. And we have done the analysis that this will be a position that we will be able to carry on into the future. So I hope that you will consider that this evening and by passing this amendment. If you recall, last year, we had to change the way we did our indirect cost allocation accounting. And so we hadn't done that when we did, the original budget was done in 2020. We just made that correction in 2021. So of course, we also have to make it in our 2022 budget. So that adjustment is also included in this budget amendment. And then there are some various other line item expenses, and I tried very hard to put remarks in all those detail pages. And thank you for everyone who's had the opportunity to go through that and those that have asked questions about it. I do, I really do appreciate it. So, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about really those line item adjustments that I'm also proposing. I do know it's typical that you do not pass on the first read, but I would encourage you to think about it this evening. This would really help us. We could actually start recruiting for this position. It's one of the big stars we see in this. And then, of course, we can start making those ARPA investments. So that's my report. I'm happy to take any questions.
All right. Thank you, Debbie. Are there any questions for Debbie? Councilman Lavaca?
Yes. Debbie, so the, what's the proposed budget difference overall?
Well, so back in 2020, we had originally proposed a $36 million budget. Overall, and currently, we're proposing a $58 million budget. But do remember that budget is not all expenses. That's including your fund balances. So that's not all the expenses. That's some of your cash and your expenses. So it did go up by, like I said, 20, about $22 million. But that's because our cash balances have gone up quite significantly. So, and you do, by law, that's, we include those in our budget amendments.
Okay. Yeah, I was seeing that, and it looked like it was a pretty significant increase on an amendment.
Yes, exactly. Again, 5 million is cash, increasing cash reserves, about 4 million in ARPA monies, and then a few other things in there as well. Projects, a lot of it is capital projects. Projects, a lot of it is capital projects, projects that we had been saving all the money for, so that we are now are able to spend that cash for those projects, lots of arterial projects going on.
All right, thank you. Councilman McLaughlin, do you have a question?
Yes, um, thank you. Thank you for putting all this together, I know it was a lot of work, um, I appreciate that. Um, I just had two questions for you. Um, one of them's kind of related to what Senator Wagner was saying, how the state had a kind of windfall of cash and then spent it all. Is there anything that we can do as a city now that we are in that similar position to help Cedro-Woolley residents? I know it's, you know, not gonna be major, but is there something that we can do to help the community now that we're in that position?
Yeah, absolutely, if the council has a, has a priority project or something, you know, sets a policy, we have reserves available for those, um, strategic plans. Actually, city council has a fund that's for strategic needs, so if the community, um, has a need, um, to help our residents, we would be able to do that, so absolutely. And then as you recall, we did not pass property tax increase, so, um, we, that we, you know, we were trying to support our citizens. And there's also now additional monies that we're gonna be able to support, some of our utility billing customers that are in arrears, so we're looking forward to being able to support those that may not have been able to pay their utility bills.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, so, um, Ms. Burton is requesting that the council take into consideration passing the budget amendment tonight. How does the council feel about that? What would you like to do?
Madam Mayor, out of respect to, uh, Councilman Owen and the other counselors, uh, Councilwoman Diamond.
Diamond.
Um, that are not present tonight, I think we should hold off to a second read, if that's okay with everyone else.
I would concur with that.
Okay, I do as well.
All right, so we will bring this back then on the 25th. All right, thank you. Um, moving on to the approval of the rural grant funding request.
Thank you Mayor, that would be me. So, um, this is our next effort to, uh, begin funding the follow-on projects for the Jones-Johnliner Trail Road Project, and, uh, due on February, excuse me, May 23rd, is the rural program, federal rural program, uh, grant opportunity. It is similar to the RACE grant that, uh, came to you, um, two council meetings ago for your approval. This, this is a much more limited proj, uh, program, uh, it does require a 20%, minimum 20% match, uh, so we are not applying for the entire corridor project, which was 25 and a half million is what we applied, uh, were proposing to apply for under the RACE program. With the match requirement, um, and using the same basic funds that you approved for that, uh, RACE program, uh, that's reduced the, uh, capacity to about 11 million. And so the project that we propose to apply for is the, uh, Jones-Johnliner BNSF Undercrossing Connection Project, uh, which is 11, uh, million dollars. The main change from the city match part of this, are, is outlined in the memorandum, uh, we had, uh, allocated $600,000 in the RACE grant program to support this same project, this was designated for this part of it. Because of the 20% match requirement, uh, and another kind of esoteric rule that they have, that you can't double-count federal matches, um, we'll have to add 103,000 in local funds to this to make all of that work. Uh, and this thing, this application is dependent on a couple of other, uh, funding opportunities that we're also pursuing. The first one is the Skagit County Economic Development Grant, uh, which you authorized us to apply for a month or so ago. Uh, I did present on that program, um, last week, and we've applied for 500,000. Uh, we're, uh, counting on that for this, this application. And in addition to that, we'll need another, uh, $760,000 to make up the total 20% match we need to do, and we're proposing to do that out of a 2023 application under the SCOG-sponsored federal STP US program. And so this additional match that I'm talking about in this application is actually the match for that STP US grant that you would see coming up next year. So this is a kind of a large house of cards, but oftentimes these grants are, uh, this is the way we put this together, to have the required match and to be able to come up with the entire project. If this is funded, uh, it would move us, uh, in a major step towards, uh, making that project a reality, it would complete the BNSF Undercrossing and the missing link between Jones Road and, and John Liner Road from, uh, connecting those two roads from SAP to Reed Street. It's, uh, an expensive project for a number of reasons, uh, the railroad is part of that. You'll recall that in addition to completing the railroad, which we've actually, uh, BNSF has designed that, they've driven the piles, they bought the bridge material, um, so the actual completion of that, to finish that up, uh, is about a half a million. And, um, but in addition to that, we're required to close the SAP road crossing, and so we have made some progress on that. Prior, BNSF was, uh, making noise like they wanted a new bridge at SAP Road, even though it, the roadway would be closed. Uh, we've settled on a, a much simpler approach, but still expensive, and that is, they're actually going to, um, we would put a box culvert in on Brickyard Creek, uh, and then they would actually, uh, fill in the old structure and abandon that in place, basically. So it's kind of a win-win, uh, for both of us, really, that's a pretty dangerous crossing, uh, for people to try to drive through. Now, you might recall we had a fatality there about six years ago, uh, unfortunate event at that particular location, somewhat related to high water and, and other factors. So this is a proposal for you tonight, uh, to approve, uh, the director to submit, uh, sign and submit this grant application. And the reason my name is on it rather than Mayor is it has to be submitted electronically. And so what will happen is, uh, through the federalgrants.gov process, Charlie would authorize me to, or make me a, uh, authorized user to submit the application. And, um, and then I will be able to do that. Uh, and this also includes, uh, committing the city's, uh, funds that are outlined in the, uh, page that I've got there for that purpose, which would include the original 600,000 in local funds from our four transportation fund sources, plus another 103,000 to support the STP US application next year. And you'll get another look at that, uh, that'll come back to you again as we apply for those additional funds next year on STP US, and we'll, we'll, we re-up all of these numbers at that time. It's a bit of a long shot, but we are pursuing every opportunity that we have, uh, to put these in, so, um, that's, that's our proposal to you tonight. And so you'll see before you a recommendation on the, uh, cover page of that, um, to authorize those things.
All right, thank you Mark. Are there any questions for Mr. Freiberger? Mr. McLaughlin? No? Mr. Lavaca?
Uh, Mark, so it sounds like you're, like this is a pretty feasible plan that you support pretty well, um, as, as an option going forward. It looked like a really good option and, and you did it very well in the packet, so.
Yes, uh, it, it's quite doable. Uh, I, I hope this 11 million dollar estimate is, is conservative, uh, but I've, I've given up making too positive statements about that because of all of the effects of inflation that we've been facing. Uh, we did update the estimate, uh, when we were preparing the RACE application, so it, it's a, it is an estimate that includes a 25% contingency, which I would have choked on a couple of years ago, but I think it's kind of a minimum right now with current climate. Uh, so yes, I, I do recommend that we, uh, go forward with this application.
I'd like to make a motion to move forward with this resolution or this application.
All right. Is there a second?
I'd like to second that.
All right, thank you. Yes, go ahead.
I'll second that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Burns.
Are, are we in the discussion?
So we have, so we have a motion by Mr. Lavaca and it's seconded by Mr. Burns, are there any more questions or discussions?
Thank you, um, I just had one question for you. One of the mentions was, it's expected to be completed in 18 months, uh, it might be a challenge to get additional grant funding to move forward with the project. Can you just talk a little bit about that paragraph?
Yeah, so, as I mentioned, uh, there's, there's a couple of other things that have to come into place, uh, and we're proposing the STP US application, uh, that won't be available to apply for until 2023, it's usually in the spring about this time. Uh, so it's timely enough for that, uh, and the way we can make this work, uh, you'll see some of my scheming when I put these together, uh, we have sufficient funds with what's allocated here to begin the design phase early, that takes about a year. Uh, and what the 18-month, uh, timeline is, is to the time you obligate, uh, the funds, the federal funds that are granted under this, it's not completing the project, but it's obligating the funds. And that's usually done in two stages. Uh, you obligate the design phase and then you obligate the construction phase. And so as long as we have gotten, uh, those funds secured by that point, uh, we would be in a position to do that. The other challenge I do face with the STPT US funds is, they're set up with a, um, an expenditure schedule that goes over up to four years, uh, when those are granted. We've been able to, uh, pretty consistently, uh, advance construction, those funds over the last few years to where it will probably be programmed somewhere around 2025 or 26, but we've generally speaking been able to advance those funds and do them in, in a much quicker term. So, um, a lot of things have to come into play, and this gives us the opportunity to, to do that.
All right, thank you. Any more questions? Okay, as I said, we have a motion on the table, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. All right, so it looks like they've authorized you to do that, Mr. Freiberger.
Thank you, Councilor.
Okay, so, um, that ends our new business, um, and there is no executive session tonight, so with that, I wanna thank our special guests again, um, Senator Wagner and also, um, Jackson Blunt, and all of you have a good evening, we are adjourned.